There we go. Good evening, welcome to the Rosemont City Council for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. This evening, we have a scout in the audience who's working on his Eagle Scout. I've asked him to come forward, so Dylan Lebang, if you'd come forward and lead us in the pledge. Please rise and join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Dylan.
All right, the agenda for this evening, are there any additions or corrections?
No, sir.
Saying none, I'll move the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. And this evening, the first item up, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We have us, with us tonight are two Dakota County Commissioners representing Rosemont. I'll turn this over to Mr. Martin.
Thank you Mayor, Members of the Council, yeah, no further ado, I just wanted to invite Commissioner Drasty, Commissioner Haiman Rowan up to the podium, I think they're hoping to get a more routine visit with us and a chance to give kind of a county update, both to the city council and then public at home, so with that, folks, turn it over to you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, staff, it's an honor to be here and I know you know why there's two of us before the public as was stated. Commissioner Mary Haiman Rowan has Apple Valley and parts of Rosemount from Shannon Park to the west, and then I have the remainder. So with that, we'll briefly go over some accomplishments, talk about roads, and then some future plans, and with that, Commissioner.
Well, good evening Mayor and council members, what an exciting city to be in, I just listened to your Port Authority meeting and you have lots of great stuff continuing to happen in Rosemount, and we do too, in the county. We are expanding our library services, I think may, you may already know this, the, thank you. We have self-service hours in all of our libraries. Can we move that forward? Okay. Where are we pushing? Are you helping?
Oh, there we go.
There it goes, I mean, look at all that. That's pretty exciting, including, including a bison, do I just roll it forward? Yes. Okay, our libraries, every one of our libraries, which we have 10, have self-service hours, it is open from 6:00 to 11:00 for registered customers, it provides the customer with meeting space, computer use, Wi-Fi, and also you can do checkout books and you can register with a QR code. So, I saw the chief walk in, I don't see him anymore, but public safety and mental health are on lots of people's minds these days. We opened this year a crisis and recovery center, it is a, it is a place that really welcomes people, adults, anyone going through trauma, mental health experiences would feel very welcome, it's trauma-informed, it's a much-needed resource for Dakota County. Social Services handles the crisis response and assessment, and the Guild Incorporated operates a 16-bed residential facility at that site, and that is in West St. Paul at the Northern Services Center. We also opened just a couple weeks ago, Commissioner, two weeks ago in our jail, an integrative health unit, and it serves inmates with crisis needs, why is that important? Well, we want to have a successful experience for the people who are customers who unfortunately end up in the jail, and sometimes it's because of a health issue, sometimes it's because of a mental health issue, and so this provides us an opportunity to be able to help those individuals and to help them move back and transition into the community successfully, and that is important for all of our residents. And, I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner.
So, growing the Greenway system, this past fall, many of you were there, but this took, I think it was approximately 30 years to complete the last two-mile section on the Mississippi River Greenway. We have completed 57 miles of our Greenway system in the county with the goal of 200-mile network, but...
Can I just add something?
Sure.
He becomes a Commissioner and it's done.
I looked at many, many plans as Mayor, I must say, whoops. Also, late last fall, we just completed the dam, Billsby Dam, that dam was built, just ironic, the same year Mankato was built, 1923, Mankato failed last spring, we were fortunate to have the spillway in on this one, that it just maxed this out and it protects Cannon Falls and farms around there. We've installed two turbines, generator, later this year, when Excel completes the substation, it'll generate power for approximately 8,000 homes, and it'll produce approximately a little over a million dollars of revenue with the power we'll be putting on the next network starting next year. Also, as you noticed last year at the library, we've done a lot with solar and green energy. So, Rosemount, the North Service Center, Apple Valley Library, and this Galaxy and our Hastings Center, we put in solar. This one produces 96% of the energy that the library uses, so we'll be continuing that, but the carport would fit well here in this particular lot. We also, you have two people here that worked at the city level and now at the county, we have, working on strong partnerships and improving them in any way we can with our townships and our school districts. Just some of the partnerships, you all know the 911, public safety elections, embedded social workers in the last five years, parks, environmental protection, crisis resources, transportation, just to name a few of the things that we partner. But I will like, would like to highlight, especially on elections, the past year and a half, we added staff, and one of the problems we had was the county had four years ago and three years ago with results is the increasing absentee ballots, and I can't say how important it is, working through that process today, the county takes all those ballots in and it just eliminates a roadblock, but especially to your city clerk that sits here to my right, you have an A1 city clerk, I know you all know that, and what a wonderful job. Many years on the job, and what a important role in the elections that they play. Okay, what did I do? One other thing on housing, you're all aware, you see a lot of housing in Rosemount of various types, but it is a key issue. Last fall, we completed Nichols Point, it's at the end of the outlet mall, right next to Cedar, 24 units, one bedrooms, it was affordable for seniors with a preference for military veterans, we had over 600 people apply, it just shows the high, high demand of those that were in there, 80% are veterans, but it is immediately occupied, we'll have a formal open house later this year. Secondly, we had a groundbreaking last summer, workforce housing, you don't have to look around Rosemont with all the construction and it's that entry-level housing, there's a strong need. We broke ground in Farmington with the second project down there, that'll be opening later this year, and we'll also be stepping into most likely senior housing later this year, and we're working with your staff and all staffs at the city. Now I'd like to just move on to road projects in Rosemount. So, County Road 42, Biscayne, you saw the temporary blockage of that corner, it's been an issue since, I know it was at least last fall, last summer, working with city staff and county on what to do on an interim basis, especially since the school is building a new middle school there until the light goes in, so there will be a more permanent barrier put in there shortly, initially, from what I can understand, talking to county engineers, and I think city here, it's working the way with it blocked off. County Road 42 and Business Parkway, two weeks ago, we just initiated a contract, so from Business Parkway, Biscayne, 145th, all the way to Auburn, their SEH is the engineer, they'll be studying it to look at all four intersections, the county did a study 10 years ago, they're projected to put a light at Biscayne and Auburn and some other things at the other two intersections, it'll just reaffirm. Notice, open house the summer of 2025, so hopefully it'll be announced, we'll work with the city and inform as many people as possible. 117th Street Construction, technically that's in Amber Grove Heights, right on your northern border, it's, will be a two-lane road, probably the most expensive one in the county because of two landfills, two railroads, refinery, tank, various gas companies there, but the reason I put this on here, notice it's a two-year construction, anytime a road around your city is closed, it'll affect traffic, so Rich Valley Road, most of it will be on 52, but you may see more and sort of justifies the temporary light that was put at 42. Also, Highway 3 and 142nd Street, right after school's out this year, Mendat has a project, I can remember, sitting in a library with Senator Carlson, yeah, Clausen, and Transportation Chair probably eight years ago, and finally, that'll be constructed. However, even though it's a Mendat project, when you close off the main highway through your town, McAndrews Road, Pilot Knob is the detour, but I'm sure you will see things occurring throughout your community as roads are closed this summer. Next, Highway 3 study from I-494 to County Road 42, this will be led, kicked off later this spring, it's 12-mile corridor going through three cities, so Amber Grove Heights, Eagan, Rosemount, all the way down to 42, Mendat has been talking about this and it got delayed a year, but there's choke points all the way up and down that corridor, so the study, as I said, it was kicked off this year, it'll probably be a year, but hopefully as they get some details, we'll have public meetings in various communities along the way. County Road, or Highway 52, County Road 42 interchange, funding was received two years ago, notice there's an open house this summer with construction next year, that'll be on the northeast quadrant of 52 and 42. Highway 52 and County Road 46 study, that's all the way from Highway 3, also known as 160th Street, that'll be kicked off, open house later this fall with preliminary design in the winter of 2025, 26. But what a key component, in fact, we have a meeting next week with the Mayor, is Coats, the 52 interchange with 160th, there might be an interim, smaller project there, and then last, I'll just mention, Conamara and Akron Avenues, it's a city-led project, it'll be a roundabout, and the construction 2026, that one you have control since you're leading it, right? If you accelerate it?
No.
Yes.
Consider it accelerated.
Next, I'll just mention here, some state and federal priorities, our number one priority from the state is Interstate 35 and County Road 50, that's out in front of Fleet Farm and Lakeville, it's a choke point, there's a lot of construction that needs to be done on that interstate, but it's number one for us, the recycling zone, for you in Rosemount, Eagan's recycling zone, I think most people here know where it is, but as you get to the southern part of the county, we have no recycling zone, so we're looking at building another one in partnership with Scott County, it'll be in the Lakeville Business Park if we can get the funding for it, and then Park and Energy Projects, we're looking at doing a lot of improvements in our libraries, et cetera. The last thing I'll mention is Health and Human Services, and that's an extremely broad category, we're looking at various elements of funding, we just mentioned here, two facilities we opened, but the county more or less is the Health and Human Services Safety Net, our counties are throughout the United States, and it's a key issue for us, especially, it's approximately half of our employees, and some of the mental health issues, support for children, the programs are quite vast, but the funding needs are significant, and we just have a lot of concerns if things are cut, it would impact your residents along with everyone throughout the county. With that, I'll turn it over for the last two.
So, let's see, we're going this way. So you've heard public safety, you've heard public health, you've transportation, housing, recycling, energy, the county is doing a lot of investment in really important infrastructure, and so the surveys will be going out to 7,000 randomly selected households, and that will help us to prior, to hear what the, that the public is saying, and also to focus our priorities for the future. The last survey that the county did, from the residents' feedback, is that the county operations were something that they felt were extraordinary, and that the value that they got for their taxes that they paid were exceptional. The survey is conducted every three years, we have partnered with four other counties that helps offset those costs, reduce those costs, and the results will be available this summer. So, there's a lot going on, and how do you make sure that you know what's happening? You can sign up for e-news at www.dakotacounty.us, you can volunteer your time and your skills, I'm talking to your residents right now, it's amazing when you get involved and the impact that you can make in your county, and what a wonderful feeling that is, and I know that, you know, your volunteers in the city of Rosemount, Rosemount are, are exceptional volunteers, I've, I've witnessed your, when you, when you, when the Mayor did recognitions for the volunteers, you do a great job here. You can serve on an advisory committee, you can take county surveys, you can follow us on social media, and I also like to make sure that you do this, because I started doing this very early on, you can get your property taxes statements online, and that saves you time, it saves you paper, and it also, it saves the county, saves the county for the, not having to produce the paper. Also, you can subscribe to Property Watch to combat property fraud, this is a new service that we have in Dakota County, and we want to thank our partners. So, we have Commissioner Slavic, you remember Commissioner Atkins, who also used to serve in this role before your esteemed Commissioner, Commissioner Halverson, Commissioner Workman, and Commissioner Holberg, and so we thank you, and we, we hope that you have an opportunity to be able to ask us questions, and, and we want to come back, because there's so much going on, so we look forward to maybe in the holidays, you know, maybe December, something like that, we talked about, that we could come back and share more update with you. So, questions?
Well, we'd like to have you back before, there's other holidays sooner than that.
Well, well, if we can, if we can, that would be great, we, we just didn't want to overwhelm you with too many visits, so. Mayor, what would you like? Would you like to see us come back this summer?
Quarterly's nice.
Quarterly, okay.
Think about quarterly.
Yeah.
I'll open it up to Commissioners, any questions?
Well, thank you for the update on the roads, that's always a hot topic with our, with our community growing, I have a couple questions though, any update on a future study for County Road 42 and Highway 3? I know that was something that we talked about by the railroad tracks at one point.
I think the city was initiating part of that, correct?
You're talking with a railroad flyover study?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's a three-way partnership, county, city, Mendat, Railroad Authority, so I believe that's starting to get kicked off, you're right Nick?
I don't have a lot to add there, other than I, I understood that that would be sometime this year, obviously, there are a lot of different partnership projects highlighted in your presentation, so that, we can add that one to the, to the list as well.
Do we know if the county or the state is leading that charge? Or are you looking at the city to run that?
Do you know who the lead is on that?
I, I thought last I heard from county staff, that it would be Mendat and county, but...
I believe it's Mendat, yeah, that's a fair statement, and there's some federal funding circulating for that too.
On the three, if it's...
Right, because that's the main road doing the...
And then the, the other one too, I just want to ask, I know, I know you've been asked before, but I get asked this constantly, is there any update of paving Akron Avenue from the Rosemont border up to Cliff Road?
No. And all I'll say is, that's a city issue with Amber Grove Heights, and if you would contact them and explain the importance to you to have that paved, although it's a county road, we don't force cities, and Amber Grove Heights does not have that as a priority, plus there's a large neighborhood up there that is organized and does not want to see it paved.
And I appreciate your persistence, because you, five years ago, that was something that you brought to our attention.
Yes.
I will mention one other thing that's important, especially out on the east side, is the tunnel under 42, we're working with the city on the right-of-way, but the intent is to put a underpass underneath 42 along Akron on the east side of the road.
To DCTC.
Pass there and it'll be trails down to, eventually trails down to Whitetail.
Correct, and Greenway system along the Athletic Complex, south, and there's another underpass on the south side, Amberfield, so the connections underground.
Okay, and, you know, it was great to get the updates on a lot of these newer roads, but I have a teen driver in my house, and so some of the intersections I also get questions about are actually kind of some of our legacy intersections, a lot around like 42 and Chippendale, like, you know, there's those blinking yellow lights, and so I get asked if there's consideration by the county on how to address maybe some of those intersections where it does seem like the teenagers get into the high-speed crashes and things, so can you talk a little bit about the county's process for continually evaluating those kinds of legacy intersections?
I can tell you, we, just today, we had a meeting with county engineers on the top 10 intersections, actually it was 12, crash rates, Biscayne was one on there, and also Diamond Path and 151st Street, Apple Valley, Rosemount border. So, they're in there, they're both, Biscayne's being corrected 2027, but they're continually analyzing all intersections on all our county roads yearly, we look back three years and prioritize based on accident rate, and then the other thing that trumps it is severity. So, our severe, most severe accidents quite often are out in the country because of the speed and their intersections where sometimes you might even have a death because of the high speed, severity isn't as high in the urban world.
Thank you.
Could you share a little bit about the process? I know when you're talking about Biscayne, so it's, it's a known problem, yet the finalization of this lighting and everything is, is out until 2027, hopefully right before they open up the middle school there. Some of our residents don't realize the process, I was wondering if you could share the county process and how we get from today with that temporary to the, the lights operating in 27?
Similar to Conamara and Akron Avenue, it's a three-year process, especially when you have to acquire right-of-way, so the engineering's being done this year, right-of-way next year with hopefully contracts let end of next year with construction in early 27. But generally, it's three-year, if it was just putting a light in, it could be moved forward without right-of-way, but the reason the accidents on that particular section is the sightlines are poor, because you have to look over your shoulder from the south side and the corner there also, so they want to realign that intersection, but also they want to make certain, especially Business Parkway and 145th, the earlier study was three-quarter intersections, just reanalyze all the traffic patterns, how they've changed in the recent years, you know a middle school's going in there, the housing development, that wasn't certain 10 years ago at all, so now things have changed, and again, generally, I know it sounds like a long time, but three years quite often.
Thank you. One other question, you had a slide that was up about partnerships, there's, I don't know, there's probably at least a half a dozen, I know, chairing our 911 board is on top of my mind, at least for some of our partner cities, can you speak a little bit about the, what the county's doing regarding those partnerships now, and when our cities will have a little more information about how that partnership is evolving?
It's interesting that you asked, in fact, we had an agenda item a week ago and it got tabled, our meeting was a little long, but we do a lot of partnerships, even road construction, where we delay those shared costs, quite often if we're the lead, you're not paying those, so some are very apparent, like the 911, but there's a lot that aren't, so we're stepping back, looking at all those partnerships, and we'll probably be reaching out to the cities later on down the road, looking at what we could do to make things work better, and, and best example, especially here in Rosemount, is temporary light, it took at least six months to work through the process on 42 and Pine Ben, that's an example, that's an inordinate amount of time, I'd say, to work through the questions on that particular site.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate, we mentioned earlier, the election partnership that we have and things like that. Would we be seeing something probably by mid-year? Or would we be getting some feedback on what the county's considering, commissioners?
On Dakota 911, Mayor?
Well, all the partnerships. Because I understand that the, the 911 is being kind of held up a little bit because of the other partnerships that you're looking at and how those are being, you know, the funding either.
It's a conversation that we're having in April.
Yes. And one thing I'll mention to you, sitting in your seat, you have a lot more power than I do today. There's a seven-member board and we operate a little different.
Yeah, five of us operate faster.
So it might take us a little while. Hopefully, we can come back to you soon though with what we're thinking or what we can improve.
I appreciate you letting me poke the bear a little bit.
Well, and do you have any, do you have any suggestions for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Here's your free time.
County fund, it's real simple. County funding 100%, city zero.
I figured that that would be the case.
Everything.
On.
Everything.
Everything, yes, partnerships. So, no, we appreciate you coming out this evening and we look forward to seeing you probably in about three, four months.
Yes, thank you so much for giving us your very valuable time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care. Good to see you.
And with that, that completes item 3A for this evening. We'll move on to 3B and we'll have a little fun here with this. It was a proclamation for, proclamation of support for the monarch butterfly habitat Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This evening before you is a request from staff for the city council to adopt a proclamation supporting the restoration of monarch butterfly habitat, and then for the mayor to submit the online mayor's monarch pledge. And so just kind of to back up a little bit, the proclamation is actually part of the work plan. That goes along with the pledge that we're asking the mayor to take part in. There's been over 600 mayors and tribal and other government leaders that have joined this pledge, and so we're asking Mayor Wiesensel to also join the pledge. And there's quite the work plan that comes along with being part of this program. Many of the activities in the work plan, we're already doing. And we're, we're, we're well on our way to meeting a majority of these things, which for many smaller communities, it takes a number of years to do. But it's just things like, like I said earlier, it's the proclamation that we hope to adopt tonight. It's engaging with our community gardening groups to have them plant milkweed in the community gardens. It's things like creating a community-driven educational conservation strategy, which we do online. We have some information on our website that our ESC has put together. We also, it also calls for us to maintain pollinator-friendly demonstration areas, which we've done at Tallamore Park, Greystone Park, and the Umore Ballfields. And so we're well on our way to, to, to meeting a lot of the, the areas in that work plan that need to be met. And then we'll be back to give an annual update on this activity. And with that, I would ask that you consider adopting that proclamation and then also approving the mayor to submit that online monarch pledge. And I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, we will proceed with the proclamation reading first and then the motion. So please go ahead and start.
Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species that, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from the caterpillar to the buffalo, to the butterfly, has captured the imagination of millions of Americans and?
Whereas we are deeply concerned about the decline of the monarch butterfly population, both the western and eastern monarch populations have experienced significant declines. Less than 1% of the western monarch population remains, while the eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. Monarch scientists attribute the population decline to degradation and loss of summer breeding habitat in the US, and loss of winter habitat in south-central Mexico and coastal California and?
Whereas cities, towns, counties, and communities have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. Municipalities can provide habitat at public parks, median strips, community gardens, schools, and municipal buildings, like recreation centers and libraries. Events such as community workshops, native plant giveaways, and monarch festivals can educate residents about the cultural significance of monarchs and how to create habitat. Simple changes in landscaping ordinances or other policies can make a big difference for the monarch too and?
Whereas we recognize the importance of creating monarch and pollinator habitat at parks, gardens, and other green spaces that every member of our community can equally enjoy. Our work to help save the monarch butterfly intentionally engages all parts of our communities, ensuring that historically marginalized communities are not left out of the work or that the many benefits of this work will create. And now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Wiesensel, Mayor of Rosemont, Minnesota, we hereby commit to help restore habitat for the monarch and encourage our residents to do the same so that our magnificent butterflies will once again flourish across the continent. Dated this 18th day of March 2025, signed, Mayor. With that, would someone like to move the motion in the affirmative?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Tyson, second by Freski, to adopt a proclamation just read supporting the restoration of monarch butterfly habitat, and for myself to submit the online mayor's monarch pledge. Roll, please.
Climpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
And the proclamation motion is carried 4-0. And with that, that completes item 3B. And the monarchs are pretty butterflies. Item four, response to the public comment. This evening, we do not have any to respond to, and we'll go to item five for public comment. Anyone wishing to come before council and address the council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda may do so at this time. Please state your name and address and the podium is open. Seeing no one at this time, we will close the public comment and move on to consent agenda. Is any council member wishing to pull any items?
Yeah, D and F.
D and F, okay. And I'm also going to pull E and G. Okay. So I'll skip those. So what we have this evening for the consent agenda with items D, E, F, and G, pull for further discussion or comment, or in this case, I think recognition. We have bill listings, the minutes of the March 4th, regular and work session, the declaration of surplus property from the fire department that has been to meet the NFPA 10-year standards that don't, that equipment will be donated to the Minnesota Exploring Association, Fire Exploring Association. The liquor license amendment for Omni Orchard LLC, it's basically an owner name change. The temporary on-sale liquor license for the VFW for an outdoor event. Authorization creating a recreation program assistant for expanded program work. The city of Rosemont and Dakota County CDA LAHA agreement, which stands for the Local Affordable Housing Agreement. Last year, we received $85,000, that was our 2024 allocation, and we work with the county CDA related to housing. That was from the sales tax from the imposed state tax from last year. And then the award of contract for municipal well number 17, phase two, $2.2 million for Rice Lake Construction. So with that, I'll put the consent agenda, I'll move the consent agenda, those items. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Wiesensel, second by Climpel. Roll, please.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
And consent agenda items noted, completed 4-0. We will pull up, I'm going to do these a little strangely, but items D and F and have our police chief come forward. It is a donation acceptance for the officer wellness programming and the donation acceptance for the K-9 program.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I gotta be a little cautious with this because both donors asked me to keep their name anonymous, but I think it's worth celebrating. I asked them multiple times and, but I need to respect their wishes as I've been advised by, not only by them, but by our, our legal staff in the past. So the, the first donor, I got to meet with him for a while at his residence, and he's a Vietnam veteran and been a long time Rosemont resident, active in the community, and decided that he wanted to support our staff following a recent case investigation where he became victim of a, of a scam. Unfortunately, as we've seen this continue to grow, and it's something that's, that's on our minds, it's on our federal partner's mind, is how do we prevent some of these scams that are, that are plaguing our community? They seem to change daily, weekly. In this particular case, there was a scam proposing as his bank, then explained to him that his accounts were compromised, they needed to be emptied, money deposited to a different location. Thankfully, our detective Casey Murphy was on the case and there was about $24,000 in funds that had been sent, and our detective was able to retrieve about half of them, $13,000. So in speaking to this individual, I said, you know, I pleaded with him, I said, you don't need to do this. You've already, you're already out $13,000, there's no sense, you know, giving away more. And he just, he's a gem of a guy, sat there in state hockey tournament, I was playing in the background, got to visit with him for a little bit, and he wants to put it towards officer wellness. So that's where that donation's going. The second one is for $10,000, and that is a lady in our community, again, longtime resident, been a supporter. I met her about five years ago and got to spend some time with her at her residence as well. She has a very nice piano that we got to play for a little bit. That was, that was a good change in my day to the normal, normal routine. And she wants to support the first-ever K-9 program. So I let her know that we finally selected a trainer for our K-9, and that's a goal to jump off that program this year. So she jumped on the, on the cause, got me in touch with her family, who helps organize some of her finances, and that check should be incoming any day now. So we're asking for the council to support the generosity of our community. It ceases to amaze me, the people that step up to support us, and it's really nice to have that, and we're just looking to accept those donations.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, so thanks, Chief, I appreciate that. And one of the reasons why I wanted these two things pulled is I just, I respect the wishes of the, of the people that donated, but I just, I think I wanted to recognize that even after some of the things that, you know, the first person went through, the willingness and the commitment to volunteer back to some, something like that. I mean, you see all kinds of negative things that happen in the community from time to time to witness some of that. I mean, I can only imagine that, and that'd be kind of cool.
Yeah, very cool.
You know what I mean? And then, and then the second one, once again, a very large donation for the K-9, you know, something that we've been trying to do for quite a while, you and your team, and now we're progressing and it's a submission. Did that, get that kind of volunteerism? I just think it just brings volumes, and even that they are, you know, not disclosing their name, I, I think that's just even more reason to just celebrate it a little bit. So hopefully, without giving any recognition, they're seeing some of this because I, I just think it's important and it also makes kind of the atmosphere of what Rosemont truly is, I believe. So, and it's great that you got to play a little piano with.
Yeah, it was a nice standard upright, and it was, it was in tune, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Awesome, so.
Yep, you can move both items if you want to do them at the both at the same time.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation acceptance of officer wellness, item D, and then item F, donation acceptance of the K-9 program.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Tyson, second by Freski for items 6D, 6F, donation acceptance. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
And they complete and approved 4-0.
And then the other two items are 6E and 6G. These are donation acceptance from Minnesota Energy Resources for $500 and a donation acceptance from First State Bank of Rosemont for $1,000. Both of these are for Safety Camp, and I'd like to have Director Schultz come up and speak to a little bit about Safety Camp. And I think these are actually pretty regular donators who are city.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, for several years now, both Minnesota Energy Resources and First State Bank of Rosemont have been contacting us to see what programs we would need support with. And one of them, every year we ask for a donation is Safety Camp. Safety Camp is an all-day activity. It's on, this year it's on Friday, June 13th. It's from 8:30 a.m. till 3:30 p.m., and it costs $15 for a child to sign up. They get lunch, they get a T-shirt, and it's one of those programs where we rely heavily on the rest of our departments within the community to, within the city to help us put this event on. We have, the police department plays a huge role in this program. We have the junior SWAT program that we run during that day, so they get to try on gear, they get the, the Bearcat comes out, we have our police officers there working with kids on safety and things like that. We have bike safety, which is run by our police department. And then we also have fire safety. Then we also have some household safety things where we bring in different organizations to help with 911 safety. We usually have an ambulance come out and kind of give kids the ins and outs of an ambulance. And we can do this all for $15 a, a child because of the donations that we do get. And so we do take about 100 kids, which is kind of our cap. We, every year have a little, you know, a little bit on the waiting list, but it's a great program. We've been doing it now for 26 years and it fills up every year. We wish we could add more spaces, we just don't have the ability to do that because of some of the, the, some of the space constraints that we have, but it's a wonderful program and we look forward to it every year.
And is signup open now or when does that?
Signup opened up a couple of weeks ago, and so it closes on May 30th.
And what are the age ranges that you?
Age ranges are kids in grades two through five.
Pretty nice age group there. All right, any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And with that, I will move the motion to approve the acceptance and expenditure of $500 from Minnesota Energy Resources and the $1,000 from First State National, First State Bank of Rosemont for, to be used for Safety Camp.
Second.
I have a motion by Wiesensel, second by Climpel. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
And that passes 4-0 and completes all of the items with the consent agenda. And we'll move on to item seven, public hearings, which we have none this evening. Item eight, unfinished business, which we have none, and on to item nine A, request by Riveter Real Estate LLC for a major amendment to the Omni Orchards Farm Winery PUD agreement. Mr. Numcheck.
Thank you, Mayor. This item relates to an expansion of the current operation of, by Omni Orchards at the, their location on Biscayne Avenue. They are looking to expand to the parcel immediately north of their current location and construct a building that would house wine production and event space and a tasting room. So a little bit of background or summary on this, the planning commission reviewed the final site and building plan, found it to be in conformance with the city's zoning code and approved that for the applicants at its meeting in February. The planning commission also recommended approval of expanding the PUD area to include the subject property, which is again, immediately north of the current operation. The planned unit development agreement contains two deviations from the code that the applicant is hoping to apply to the new facility, the new buildings that, or the new building that they will be constructing. Those are related to the exterior materials. The council may be familiar with the building that is currently out there, has a kind of agricultural feel to it with the metal paneling for its exterior walls, and then vinyl decal for the signage on that wall. So the planning commission recommended expanding the PUD area to include the subject property so that there can be a cohesive feel amongst all of the, the site. So the actual action, well, is functionally amending the PUD based on advice from the city's attorney. The actual action by the council will be to repeal and replace the existing planned unit development agreement so that the description unit development agreement so that the description, legal description of the properties that would be under that planned unit development agreement contains both parcels. So as I said, the, the subject property is immediately north of Omni's existing operation on Biscayne Avenue. You can see on the map before you, on the east side of Biscayne is Dakota Aggregates' ongoing mineral extraction operation. The remainder of the site is surrounded by undeveloped land within the Rosemount Business Park area. The site plan for the expansion includes the new building near the northern portion of the site. The site currently contains a dwelling and a metal pole barn. Those will be demolished and removed. I do believe that there is some collaboration on the removal of the existing residential structure with the city's fire department to allow for some training exercises with that. But you can see on the site plan before you hear, access into the site will come from the existing driveway into there with some parking immediately adjacent to the building, and then a new parking lot to the south of that new building connected via sidewalk. Also note that with this project, there will be paving of the overflow parking or expanded parking on the current Omni site, south of this one. So here's some exterior elevations showing what the buildings will look like, very, very consistent with the existing building that's out there now, corrugated metal paneling with a little bit of brick or stone wainscoting on the, on the side-facing Biscayne Avenue. The loading area would be in the rear, and there is also a covered porch area on the south side of the building. The applicant did provide us with some floor plans to give you an idea of how things would be laid out. You can see the largest space being the event room. There's a smaller tasting room with some bar seating and, and smaller tables, and the wine production area in the back. And then just so the council can see the landscape plan, there will be some vineyards planted near the front of the, the new building, some orchard trees placed here. There's a number of heritage trees that, excuse me, are anticipated to, to be retained as well, as much as possible. The applicant's also proposing some outdoor areas for small-scale wedding ceremonies on the site as well. So as I said, the action before the council, since the planning commission did approve the site plan, is simply to adopt a resolution that would repeal the existing planned unit development agreement and replace it with a similar agreement containing the exact same provisions related to exterior materials and signage, but encompassing both properties on Biscayne Avenue. I can take any questions that the council may have. I do know Zach and Justin from Omni are here, and I'm sure they are more enthusiastic about speaking about their project than I would be. Although I am very excited and enthusiastic.
You're excited too.
Yes, very much so.
Open up the floor to the council members. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll take the opportunity to have the applicants come forward and. Can you please state your name, address?
Yeah. Zach Ward, co-founder of Omni, eight-eight-five-nine Comstock Court, Maple Grove, Minnesota. Council and mayor, thank you for having us. And Justin Walsh, another founder of Omni, one-four-nine-six-two, sixty-fourth Avenue North, Maple Grove, Minnesota.
Again, welcome. I was just going to ask, just kind of take a little history lesson here. So you came to the city back in twenty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so shortly, well, kind of through COVID a little bit there, and seems like you're doing all well if you want to expand.
Yep. The opportunity presented itself probably one year too early, but we're going to make it work.
I know there's a lot of, both residents from Rosemount and residents from the greater Rosemount area that spend time there and, and enjoy it very much, so certainly money is being spent there, and it's looking forward to more and better. I'll open up to council here. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say thank you for investing in Rosemount, and just to point out to our residents, I think one thing that was really cool to me as I looked at the plans was, I was really excited by that capacity for two-hundred-and-fifty-two. Like, that is a new amenity in town to be, have that size of a, an event facility. So that is really fantastic. Really love what you guys are doing with your space, and thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you for having us. It's really been a dream come true. I don't think we could have asked for more in, in this expansion, so.
Yeah.
And thank you to city staff who've been super helpful, helping us wander through this once again a couple of years later.
Yeah. I guess I, I was just there twice this week, and literally, one of the things I'm always surprised by. Meeting's Friday. No, it's.
Well, it's Tuesday.
St. Patrick's weekend. Just trying to get out into the community.
Twice in one day.
Trying to get out in the community. No, but, but one of the things we were talking about is just how many different people are coming from Farmington and Lakeville and other areas too. So we, we talk about building, you know, our, bringing in businesses that bring, you know, destinations into Rosemount, you know, this is a perfect example. And so this addition is not only something that I'm strongly in favor of, but we're just appreciative of that you guys are also, you know, you both said your addresses are Maple Grove, to investing here in Rosemount. So it's just, it's well noted, and it's definitely bringing people from other community to this community and sharing one of the things that we love about it. So thank you.
Certainly good beer, good wine. I like the wines.
I go for the peat.
Or beer. I mean, a good variety, yeah, across the board, so just really enjoy that.
Now, for our residents, what are you looking at for timing of some of the different phases of this project?
Yeah, we're hoping to have the wine production facility up and running by this year's harvest, around October first. We're not going to take any event reservations this year, but we'll start booking for next year. And assuming things go according to plan, you know, we might sneak in a few at the end of the year that maybe are more of a friends and family or help us sort of shake off the rust on this kind of new venture for us.
Test drive that facility.
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I look forward to a, or, affirmative recommended action.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, that's what I asked.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution repealing the existing Omni Farm Winery planned unit development agreement and replacing it with a similar agreement that encompasses both one-five-six-seven-five Biscayne Avenue and one-five-seven-zero-one Biscayne Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion by Freski, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Klimpil?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Yes.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
And that approves four zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and look forward to the expansion. That completes nine A, and we'll move on to nine B, accepting bids, award contract, and declare costs to be assessed, and set the assessment hearing for the 2025 street improvement project. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have two actions in front of you tonight. One is for the, accepting the bids and awarding the contract for the 2025 street project. We got three bids on the project, and I want to just make a comment that we did do a little bit of adjustment to our contract to, to make sure that the contractors had some qualifying information. I did a review on the two low bidders on that, and they both, they met our qualification requirement, so. I want to just touch base, the low bidder has done work in the city in the past. It's been a few years since we've worked with them, but, so Minnesota, excuse me, Minnesota Paving and Materials had the low bid, and we're estimating for that total project cost to be about two-point-six million dollars. That is about eleven percent below the engineer's estimate, and just about twelve percent below the next low bid, so. And that also includes, there were two alternate items. Alternate number one is the, is sealing the sewer lateral, so these are, we're going to line the sewer for several of the streets, and this would line a portion of that lateral up toward the home, so just to make sure that we've got a good seal there. And alternate two is for the one-hundred-and-forty-fifth street intersections. There's two of those, Canada and Cameo, that currently have bumpouts there, and I know that we want to just improve that, have had some issues with maintenance in the past and the plow drivers, just how they're designed, so this will improve that in, in those two areas, so. That said, so it's, it will be funded via a few different methods. We have the street CIP, we'll have assessments, and that assessment hearing is coming in a month, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. Then we also have Water Sewer and Stormwater will be funding that as well. And again, like I mentioned, it's about ten percent below the, excuse me, eleven percent below the engineer's estimate. The second item that we have on there is just declaring those costs to be assessed as well as calling the assessment hearing. So that would be for April fifteenth, and so there will be notices that will be in the paper as well as individual mailed notices to all the properties being assessed at that point in time. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have at this point.
Floor is open to council. Any questions? Questions? Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a, move the recommended action motion?
I'll move to adopt resolutions related to the 2025 street improvement project, city project, 2025 dash O two. Item one, accepting the bids and awarding a contract. Item two, declaring the cost to be assessed and calling the assessment hearing.
And again, that hearing is April fifteenth?
April fifteenth.
Twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Klimpil, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Klimpil?
Aye.
And that passes four zero and completes item nine B. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item ten, announcement, city staff updates. Mr. Martin?
Mayor and council, I think I don't have anything for you tonight, so I can throw it right back to you.
All right, completing ten A, and we'll move to ten B, upcoming community calendar events. First off, let's see if we get the right one. So we have a youth commission meeting tomorrow, March nineteenth, 2025, from three forty-five to four forty-five. The fire department recruitment night, March nineteenth, so tomorrow evening, from six p.m. to eight p.m., fire station number one. Park and Rec Commission meeting, March twenty-fourth, next Monday, seven to eight p.m. The Utility Commission meeting the following Monday, March thirty-first, from five thirty to seven. Both those are at the city hall here. And then the next city council work and council, work session and council meeting, the work session from five to seven on April first, and city council meeting at seven to eight also on April first. And I'll just jump a little bit ahead and recognize our 2025 Rosemount Expo will be that following Saturday, April fifth, from nine thirty to two thirty at the Rosemount High School. Anything we want to add there? Oh, and that, I believe that evening is guns and hoses, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So, and that starts at, I don't have a note here, but.
It's roughly five-thirty doors open, but the games start at six.
Okay, so the doors open at five-thirty, games at six, and that is at the Community Center ice rink. And so with that, there's no other business to come before council this evening. I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second on the floor to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.[1768.98][1768.98]